I call me March 2022 USD 350 Board of Education meeting the board, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approved the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing. How do you order to report for the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, motion carried. Patron comments. All right. Business items, strategic planning.
This, we have the final report. I've reviewed it. This is the final report, starting on page 20 from Gary Seacrest, who was our KSB consultant, assigned to collect some information for us from our community on February 17th to March 1st, and that report is included here. I've reviewed it a bit. I was, you know, involved in some of the discussions as more of an observer. You guys were more participants. Any initial thoughts on the process there for those two nights?
I really enjoyed it. I mean, I felt like I got a lot out of it, and it was neat to have a lot of the public sample from a lot of different demographics in the community, I thought.
We had a pretty good turnout. I've heard from some school districts that haven't had great turnout for it, so I was happy with that.
It's amazing what you learn that you think you thought was one way that some people don't see it that way, so that was neat.
So the, I won't review every page of this. Basically, what we did is we looked at what we, what our vision would be as a group, as our small groups, our seven tables, and then what, what we valued for the five focus areas, students, educational program, physical plant, personnel, and communication and culture. And then I actually had the staff go through and do kind of the same thing with those five focus areas, but had them say, what do we do well and what do we need to improve? So whereas we as a group, Gary wanted to know, what do we value? So as a group, we may have come up with, well, we value a safe and secure facility. Doesn't mean our facility is not safe and secure, but that's something we value. So whereas when I went with the teachers, what do we do well and what do we need to improve? So more specific on areas they thought we did well and areas we needed to improve, and that's what, that's second part of what he included. And then we went through strengths and weaknesses of each of those areas, of the common themes that we identified, and then all those common themes came back to what's most important. And came up with communication and engagement, facilities, aging facilities, safety and security, kind of relating to facilities, and then strong staff and caring staff. So those were our two, I guess, focus areas of where those groups came up with that we thought were important. And second night, we went through and looked at, what can we do to improve these areas? What should we be doing? What could we look at? And that's what Gary has listed here, starting on page 30 of that supporting documents. A lot of things here that will be valuable to us, maybe specifics about things to do, like formal alumni board, need better bilingual communication, things like that. Our old buildings and facilities, a big theme there was, we need to identify our needs, you know, the greatest needs, long-term, where do we want to be, what are our immediate needs that need addressed? So maybe having some sort of needs assessment in regard to facilities. Safety, the primary issue there was really the north entrance, where you walk right through that doorway and be right in the cafeteria in the hallway where lots of people are with, you know, we have an office right there, but people would have to see that person come in, and they generally do, but it would be ideal to have an entrance like we have on the elementary side where you have to enter the office to come into the building. So that's, that's one thing that came up. And then the library situation, having students intermixed with community members, and then just that trip from the school to the library. We've never had, we've had very few issues with those things over the years, but it is a concern, so.
That was brought up, Josh. Do we want to have a camera facing the school to the library for the kid, teachers that are telling the kids to go to the library by themselves?
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
They can't see that?
Yeah. The teachers can't, but, but we can see all the way to the library. We do need more cameras. One of the things in here, here's a good example, add security cameras throughout the building. We do have security cameras in most areas of the building. There's some spots that we need to add cameras. We don't, I won't go over it here with the, in the public meeting, but there are spots that we need to add. I don't want to get too specific on that without, no need to divulge all that in public, but so that's another area of maybe improvement with our electronic locks, those really need updated. They work okay, but they're becoming obsolete. And then our staff, having a strong staff, this is another where I think the groups really said, we, we value a strong, you know, having good people work for us and teachers that care about kids. It wasn't that we want that and we don't have that, it's that we do have it. But really, the professional development was an issue, mentoring new teachers, and that communication with, you know, a lot of these things relate back to that communication issue, so maintaining competitive salaries, things like that, so. So what happens from here, we'll put together a strategic plan between now and the next few months. I'm not going to get, you know, May gets, April and May get very busy, so I don't want to promise anything that we're going to have something put together this summer. We'll likely lean on you all to help with some further input. But this will be one part of the input, or a big part of the input, and just to give you an idea of some other strategic plans, and you can do your own Google search on that for school district strategic plan. They get pretty detailed and broad. This is for Kansas City Turner, so a much larger district. For example, they have it laid out with their mission, vision, and beliefs. We kind of have that already, a little bit of that, mission, vision, and core beliefs. And then they broke it down into specific goal areas, and you can see those there. Then they actually put together teams of staff and board to, to address those goal areas, and I think those are ongoing teams that, you know, with their staff development, they may get together as a team and review those things, but. And then a goal statement for, you know, for student achievement, they have a specific thing there that they want to achieve. So for example, we may have a goal that says, we want to increase our post-secondary success rate to 75% in 10 years. That's where we want to be, to make sure our kids are successful, post-secondary education. And then what are some other things we can do ongoing each year to meet that goal, like opportunities for college credits? We want the average student to have 10 college credits when they leave us. That will help with our post-secondary success, some of those things. So there will be some, you know, ongoing goals that maybe recruiting, retain quality staff would be a goal that doesn't have an end game, just we want the best staff we can possibly get, and what are some ongoing things we can do to make sure that we recruit the best staff and we keep the best staff? And, you know, doing exit interviews and giving teachers input into all aspects of district operations, new staff mentoring, things like that. So I won't go through this whole thing with you. Here's another example. Leavenworth, writing is very small. This is just one page, so Turner, 24 pages, and this is, they have their six areas there, and they have a goal statement for each, and then strategies to meet those goals underneath. So we'll kind of take that information and decide which way we want to go, and I think somewhere in between those is probably where we need to be, as I've been reviewing this and looking at some of that information. Facilities, I had, you know, some staff members ask, so is this just, is this about a bond issue? And it's absolutely not. With our facilities, there was lots of discussion about, you know, creative funding, and it's about the needs. We need to know what our needs are, where do we want to be in 10 years and, or 15 years, and then prioritize those, and there comes a discussion of, well, how do we pay for that? And here's what we want, and the only way to pay for that is, is a bond issue. Well, if we're not going to go down that road, then this is what we can afford and this is how we can afford it. So that discussion, I think, comes later after we prioritize all of those needs. And we've kind of done that over the years, but if they do more long-term down the road, where do we want to be in 10 or 15 years? And that's what that's all about.
It's interesting, just glancing through there, some of their goal statements are very similar to what we had in some of the topics.
Right, right. So I think we've had good goals over the years, you want to ensure the financial stability of the district. Now, that will always be one, but in 10 years, what does that mean? Or in five years, what does that mean? What's a specific goal? Like that example I used of, okay, we want our post-secondary success rate to increase to this, yeah, some goals like that. And this information in, from our meetings is very helpful, identifying what the community Any questions, further discussion of that? I did want to make sure we all understand, my goal would be like August would be to have something for our place, so maybe work on this each month, have it as an agenda item. What's the progress? Let me come back in April, what's the progress? Again, August will be the goal of having something mostly finalized.
Okay, thank you. Board policy updates.
We took a look at these last month. They are a separate document there. Pages three and four of that document lay out what the policy ID is and what the rationale for changing it. There's nothing unusual here. This IIA policy is about testing for credit. It's an update for that policy. We don't have that policy right now. So if you come in as a freshman, you could just take a test and say, I know algebra one, I don't need to take the class. We don't have that policy in place. I don't recommend adding it at this point, so I don't recommend that one, and it's not included in the, in the rest of that document, but all the others I would recommend approving.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the board policy updates as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the board policy updates as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, motion carried. 2022 through 23 calendar.
I have a draft calendar here, pretty similar structure to this year. The one thing, we have that day right before spring break, we have parent-teacher conferences. Typically, we take a day off on that Friday. To do that, we would have to extend the day in May, and the committee thought, let's just keep the end date in May and forget that day since we have spring break coming up. We are doing an in-service staff development day on January 2nd.
When day graduation?
Probably the 13th, I think. We haven't looked at that specifically yet, but. Spring break matches up with the region schools and most schools in the state now.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves of 2022, 2023 calendar as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the 2022 through 23 calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, motion carried. Jobs for American graduates.
Last month, we visited a little bit about this potential JAG program and bringing it to our school district. The discussion was that with the grant, they, they provide a full-time staff member to be in our district. That staff member actually works all year, does data, training all summer, but they're employed through the JAG program, and they pay their salary, a full-time position. The JAG program would charge us about $11,000 to do that. If we wanted to implement as soon as possible with a full-time position, it would be the following school year, not the upcoming, not next school year, so it would be a year out from doing that. Stafford has a program, it's been successful for them. Their numbers are not as high as they, as the JAG folks would like to see it. I think they're looking at maybe 30, 30-plus they want in the program. They have about 14 or 15, something like that.
That's right.
So it's feasible for them to share their existing staff member with us, and then the cost would just be that $5,000 to $6,000 for the JAG fee to them, and then we would likely need to pay some mileage for that person to come over here each day. They do have somebody on staff, so we wouldn't be hiring somebody new, it would just be using who they have. I visited with their superintendent, she talked to their staff and the JAG people and thought that was definitely a workable situation. So in a nutshell, students would need to qualify for this program based on a lot of different criteria, parents not graduating high school, behind in academics in some way, yeah, a ton of different criteria. So it's not just, it's not just income, it's not just grades, it's a variety of things. They do service projects and resume building and more specific things and projects to get them ready to go out in the real world.
Is that going to affect what Mark Bryant does now?
It, it might. I say that because a lot of the things would be similar, but I think this is a lot more in-depth, and this covers all kids. So this is, this, what Mark does is specifically for special education students, and they could be involved in the program as well. There's no distinction of special ed or regular ed, everybody could be involved in that as long as they meet the criteria. It's an optional thing also, so there's nothing that says they couldn't be involved in both or complement one another's program.
Do you have a rough number on how many students would be affected in our district?
I don't, because a few of us sat down and kind of talked about it, and we probably, we came up with probably 20 kids that we thought right off, but the parent and the student has to opt in. You know, that's why we don't, we can't give a specific number. So if we present, they have a, they have an introduction night where it kind of shows the parents what it's about. Parents could say, no, I don't want my kid to be involved in it, and that's, that's fine.
I would bet with the amount of criteria that are there, that about half of our kids would meet.
Would beat the qualifications.
Meet the qualifications, whether they want to participate or not, you know, it's going to be extra work for them. So they would take a class each day, and that would be an elective class, so it would count towards graduation, but it, you know, the kids would have to make a choice, do I want this class that I have to take or this elective? And then when they're seniors, they're generally pretty flexible about, well, this kid's got to get these credits to graduate, so they can just meet during LS period or something on their own. So we think it's, it could be very valuable for our kids. So the next step would be, we would meet with Stafford to see, is this going to be a possibility?
And I, I should add too, when I say the 20, I was talking just to high school kids, so we would probably open up seven through 12, and so there'd be more kids there as well.
So that being, if we can partner with Stafford, it gets our foot in the door. If we see we have enough kids that qualify, then the following year, we could potentially move to a full-time teacher.
Yeah, the following year or five years down the road, or anything like that. The other good thing about not jumping into this with a full-time person right away, you're not risking, well, our families don't have interest, our kids don't have interest, now we've hired somebody to come work in our district, and, and it's not working, and well, sorry, we're going to have to cut the program, it's just not working. I, I mean, there's not a high risk of that happening, I feel pretty confident it's going to work, but sharing with Stafford lets us get that started and see, hey, is this going to work for us? And if it doesn't, then just go, go back to let Stafford keep that person full-time.
Hopefully helps the few kids, that's pretty, pretty cheap, you know, especially just to get to try it and, you know, get her foot in the door and see if we even like it.
How could we use that to help the success after graduation program?
I think that's entirely what it's designed to do, make sure that when kids leave us, if, if they want to go right into workforce, that they're going into a job that they're going to be successful, they're not, they're not just graduating and got their diploma and go look for whatever job they can find.
And it follows events for a year after they graduate to continue to help them, you know, that person, that person works with them beyond graduation, so.
I know the criteria seem kind of, we remember when we had it a couple of years ago, it seemed kind of like the state only looked at going on to accredited universities or schools or something for student success to meet their criteria if a level is successful. So I just want to make sure that we're going to be still meeting whatever the state is going to put out there.
Well, and keep in mind that the state's post-secondary success rate, it's based on a credential, so if you get a welding certificate, that counts as well as starting into a teaching degree or medical, you know, degree in biology to become a doctor and you complete two years. Both of those things count the same. Not every kid needs that, so that's why 75% is the goal, not 100%, but, but yeah, getting a kid in a program, I want to be a welder. Well, don't just graduate high school and go get a job. Graduate high school and get your certificate, be more employable. That's kind of part of that. I don't think it's really doing a lot different than we do now, just having, having that person to help mentor and guide those kids that needed a little more, that may not have the support at home or. So I guess next steps, we will, if you guys are okay with us at least pursuing this, we'll visit with Stafford, come up with specifics on what would be possible, and then we'll take action on it next month. That sounds okay? And if it would be helpful, we could have, if we can work out the details with Stafford, they're a specialist, we could have her come over and visit about specifics about what they do. I think that might be helpful.
Sounds good.
Go for it and post.
So hopefully, I think we could probably get together and meet, our board meeting will come up pretty quick sometime in the night, but. See if we can get that done.
Vehicle update. Are buses still out of the ways?
Yeah, they told me May or June, when we ordered it last fall, so I haven't checked on it to see where it's at, if it's, parts are on a container ship somewhere, coming from Russia or Ukraine, I don't know. This has updated mileage on it here. I did not get number 33, but I think it's around 100,000. We did not get that one today. So five school buses, number one and number 40. One is a big bus, 40 is a smaller bus. Those are our route buses. We've ordered a new replacement for bus one, for a route bus. That's the one that we approved to purchase this year, which we'll get to use this year. Number two is our flat-nose activity bus, and 43 is our newer activity bus. And then number eight is old Smokey, and we keep, keep her around, we take it to cross-country, and it's a backup. It drives okay. It burns as much foil as it does diesel, I think, but, and it's about, we're about, we're getting close to the age where we cannot use it anymore, but. Passenger vehicles, we have number 32 Suburban we use on a route. That one really needs replaced soon, we may consider. On our schedule, we have that listed as replace in two years, but I think we're going to need to find a way to move that up. And then we have three Dodge Caravans, and then one wheelchair van, and then an Expedition. I'd like to get rid of that, I'd like to move that up as well. That'll bring some decent money, I think. It's in pretty good shape, it's just stripped down so much, there's no running boards, it's hard for folks to get in and out of, and people don't like to drive it, but if we can get some decent money out of that, that'll go a long way to getting something new.
So when are you planning on doing that?
35, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't crunched the numbers on the budget to see, we'll talk that next month. So between now and then, see what we can, if we can move any of this up, and I think we can, especially for that number 32. Instead of Suburbans, we're probably going to start looking at those Ford Transits. They're not fun to look at, but when you have a Suburban that are, you know, we can fit nine in some of those, but that third person, the middle seat in the front is not. We won't get us three in there.
Don't pick the other ones either.
Even if I stay in the middle. Stay warm. But some of those Transit, they will, they will hold 10, and. But some of those Transit, they will, they will hold ten, and we're, we're pushing it every time, you know, when we take a, we really need to be taking the Suburban, when we take the Cheerleaders, we're, you know, it's not enough to take a van, so those Transits get us a couple more people in the vehicle that makes that a lot more flexible, might keep us from having to purchase another bus, too. We take that Suburban on a route, we reach the limit sometimes, we've gotta adjust if some kids decide to ride.
What's the lead time looked like on vehicles?
I have no idea on those.
Okay.
And the state bid sheet doesn't have very many vehicles on it. So in a typical year, those dealers put in bids for the state bid list, so they can get the volume, they don't make hardly any money on them, they almost sell at cost to us and to, to government entities, but that gets their volume up in their dealership and helps them out. But we're not having that now, there's not very many vehicles on the list, so. That would be the other thing about, we may wanna try to replace something this summer, but we could order it, but it won't be here till the following summer, so. So that's the situation, well, oh, sorry, we do have that, the two-o bus, and then a maintenance pickup. And those are in decent shape, I love that, the two-o bus doesn't go very far, but. Any questions on our vehicle fleet? Suggestions?
A lot of old vehicles, really.
Yeah.
Think we're gonna have to start picking them all up here.
This kind of goes with it, do, do we ever prepay or contract to new fuel?
We do not.
Is that something maybe when it goes back down, we need to consider, walk-in stuff?
Yes, we don't, we don't have fuel tanks. But we could do that through Kansas, I, I would guess. No, we don't.
Well, you told me you did your pickup, do you have to prepay that, or you just tell them how much?
Nope, still no much. They're asking me gallons.
Right. But essentially the same things. And White's probably doesn't have a program? I don't think so. I wouldn't. I wouldn't think so. All right, thank you. Board attorney. This is, I guess, more of an update. Phil Martin has been identified as our board attorney for many years, couldn't tell you how many. But he's, he retired at the end of the year, and he's still, he's still been working, trying to clean up some things and finish up this property situation with our daycare building or parents' teacher building, so he's still kind of hanging on, but we use KASB, their attorneys, we pay for that legal assistance fund every year, we do utilize them. It is nice to have an attorney, it's been nice to have Phil to be able to call, for instance, on, you know, when Garner's donated that house to us, we had to work out the legalities of that. KASB doesn't do that, they don't, you know, they'll advise us on school law, discipline issues, things like that, and then when it comes to a lawsuit, they would represent us, but they don't have people, for if there was a lawsuit with this property, they don't specialize in that. So it's been nice to have Phil available, we just paid him his hourly rate, and then we paid for him to go to the school law conference each year, and I think there was three districts he worked with, three or four, that we all split that cost, so as far as a retainer, that's really all we paid. So I've got, I've gotten some information from local districts that, some suggestions of, we could submit a request for proposals to see who would be willing to serve as our board-appointed attorney long-term, again, it would be nice to have a relationship with somebody. Or we could just identify KASB as our board attorney. Any initial thoughts on that?
What's the two, or the other schools that were involved with Phil reportedly?
Larned and Maxville, and maybe Pawnee Hides.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, when, when I talked to them, Maxville wasn't sure what they were doing, Larned, they weren't sure what they were doing either. And a lot of the other districts I talked to, they just appoint KASB as well. We don't deal with it enough that I think, I don't think we need to be paying out thousands of dollars each year to keep a, a firm on retainer.
So if we had a specialized deal like this, Phil would come along, we could just do a case-by-case basis?
Yes, that's what made it real nice with Phil. He can just advise us, and he could just, he could advise me, or he could do the paperwork for me, for the most part, if we, we needed him to do that paperwork.
We don't have an option in town that would kind of fill that role, I'd almost say do the KASB and then find one for specific circumstances, I'd hate to start paying a large retainer or be on our own.
He didn't have any recommendations? He did, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he had a recommendation of somebody that could, could do it, and then I had a recommendation from Great Band on their, who they use, that, so I could just check with those, I could just check with a few and see what their situation is, I don't know if they'd be willing to give me specifics, but at least I would know, what are we looking at for, we're gonna have to pay a yearly fee, or can we just do it as needed situation? Well, I'll do that, I'll reach out to a few, and then if we need to send out a request for proposals, we'll do that next month.
Board member activities, Carl?
Don't have any.
I'm meeting the same time we are.
Went to the NHS, a few people are in.
Sean? Jackson, nothing for me? Administrative, Mr. White?
Well, coming back from spring break always means we get to start our state assessment, so that's a good deal. Start with our juniors this week, hopefully everything goes smooth, but that goes clear through the end of April for the most part, where, where will either be some of the, some of the subject areas we can test in class where it doesn't really disrupt, some areas we have to test the students in, in groups and pull them out of classes, but that'll be going on the next month and a half. NHS, congratulations to Ian Dunn, Heidi Fisher, Paige Mansell, Kate McCann, Listen to, Patil for being inducted into the NHS, we had a nice ceremony for them, it was good to, good to be able to do that. Substate basketball, we went to, we hosted the first round here, beat Canton Galva, then we headed over to Burton, our boys lost out in the, in the semifinals, and the girls lost in the finals by one point to Little River, so basketball ended up that way, it was disappointing, but I was awfully proud of how our kids represented our community and our school, they did a good job, so. The, we hosted our junior high music festival, which we hadn't done, we didn't do last year because of COVID concerns, and so it'd have been a year, so when you think about it, those, the seventh grader or eighth graders had never performed in a group like that, so it was brand-new for everybody, and it went pretty smooth, I thought, we managed to, to get through that, and it's good to get those folks in our building and stuff, so we did, did have that, and we'll continue to do that. Junior high scholars bowl's completed, we ended up, I think, I wanna say third place, but I may be wrong there, Junior High Scholars Bowl, and our kids, again, performed well and represented us well. We had our career fair day, job day, whatever, I'm not sure what we termed it, but the, the senior class, the senior English class put this together as a project, we had twenty-some people come in to talk about different careers, and kids went through, through the day in thirty-minute segments, and went to seven different, seven different careers through the day, went super well. I thought, had Jean Clifford, who's our state board rep, come in, and she kind of opened the thing up with a presentation to the kids, got it going, and then we got the kids moving around. I did a survey for, or I didn't, excuse me, those seniors did a survey to kind of find out what we might be able to improve, we did thirty-minute sessions, not knowing if that was too long, too short, what, about ninety percent of our students said that was the right length, or that it wasn't, didn't need to be longer, seventy-eight percent said, I think it's seventy-eight, I forgot my reading glasses, said that the sessions needed to be, didn't need to be shorter, so we had a good number of people, kids, kids who thought it was, it was good. And the total number of sessions, they liked having a lot for shorter periods rather than being in one spot. Sixty-eight percent of our students said that they found a new career that they might be interested in by going to this. One of the questions was, did, did you find out you weren't interested in a career that you thought you were? We had about fifty percent of our students that said that they found out they weren't interested in a career that they thought they were going to be interested in, and understand that's as valuable as anything. So overall, our student response was really positive, our teachers talked about it in their LS class, they all went to their LS at the end of the day, and the teachers kind of got some verbal feedback from kids, and the kids really liked it. The biggest negative that kids gave us was, well, the career that I identified as one I was interested in wasn't represented. Well, we can't do that, I mean, we'd have had to find seventy people to talk to ninety kids, but, or to a hundred and thirty-eight kids, but anyway, what, what the plan is, is continue to do this year after year, bring in different careers, sometimes it'll be the same ones, depending on what the student interest is when we survey them. So we also surveyed the presenters, hundred percent of the people that responded said that the presentation length was good. The number of times presented, eighty-five percent said they liked the number of times that they presented, well, we had some people that presented all day long, so they did seven sessions, and the response from them was, how do people teach and do this every day? So it was probably eye-opening for them as well, but that's, that's a piece we'll take, maybe we can get a few more people and then not have anybody do, do the all-seven. One of the questions that they asked the presenters was, did the organizers make you feel welcome, and a hundred percent response was yes. They had it set up to where we had ushers at the door, when one of our, one of our presenters came in, they took them to where they needed to be, made sure they had water, whatever. And were the students well behaved, and I had a hundred percent said that they were well behaved on that, too, so. Overall, it was very good, I was one of the presenters, I got to present about being a principal, I can't believe that anybody put being a principal down as what they wanted to do, but anyway, I had, I had a group, and it was actually, you know, kind of refreshing to me to get some of the questions the kids asked and stuff, and it was genuine, it wasn't just, oh, we gotta be here, so we're gonna be here, I think it's a good activity for our kids to do, and we'll, we will continue to, to grow that, we'll look at these results, and there were some other questions that people wrote, you know, wrote answers to, and we will continue to, to try and improve that and hopefully get our kids exposed to more careers. The one thing we may do, haven't sat down and talked about it definitely, we may do this in the fall, and that way, if a student finds a career that they're really interested in, that might be a position for them to have made a, a relationship, I guess, or a connection with one of our presenters, and that would give them time to do some job shadowing, work-study type experiences through, through the course of the year, instead of doing it in the spring, so that is one change that we may look at. If you wanna thank anybody for the rain, you can thank Spring Sports, started today, all indoors, we had a call from Dan that said, tell the golfers to bring me jacket, we're golfing, and about ten minutes later, he said, I didn't realize how much it was raining, tell them to go to the rec. So we, we started to kick that off, I don't know, Danny, there were a lot of kids out there for, for track.
Forty-some junior high and probably thirty high school.
It seemed like twice that many in the gym, but anyway, got that started, and something that we're going to do on March thirtieth, so that's a week from Wednesday, is the Reality U, it's an economic simulation, we did it last year, thought it was pretty positive. Derek, you were one of the people that volunteered last year.
It's a good program.
And he's volunteered to help again this year. So we will be presenting that down here, The Difference is the Bank, and Ag360's sponsoring that wholly, they're paying for it, which they did last year, too, but they've also asked that we check with Stafford, Maxville, and see if they would wanna come over and join. So we're gonna do a session for our kids, eighth and tenth grade, in the morning, first thing, or at eight-thirty. Stafford will then come over as soon as we're done with that, and then Maxville will have a session in the afternoon, so I'll probably, our presenters will be here over lunch if they wanna stay, I'll, I'll grab them some pizza or something to thank them for, for helping. If any of you are interested in coming in on the thirtieth and helping even for one session, you're more than welcome to, we've got spots to put you, so let me know after this, after the meeting tonight, and I can get you on the schedule if you're, if you're interested in that. Basically, what you do is you set at a table, and they come around to you, like maybe, maybe you're the old childcare person, so you would tell them, their sheet tells, says that they have two kids, so you have to say, you know, take money from them because they have to pay daycare, because both people have a job, or whatever, it's, it's a pretty neat deal. Looking ahead, we did end up changing the date of the junior-senior play to April twenty-third and twenty-fourth, that's a Saturday and Sunday, when we did all of this scheduling, KMEA had a weekend reserved there for, for some of their stuff, and it ended up opening up, so we moved it so that the play would have longer to, to prepare, instead of rushing into it here in just a couple of weeks. So that has been changed, and I'll get information out on social media of that change. Graduation is May fourteenth, we do plan on having it in the gym, I'm not scheduling outside again, and then trying to decide Wednesday whether, what we're gonna be able to do. There is a time change from last year, we're doing graduation at one o'clock this year, so if you guys could be there, obviously, we'd, we'd love to have you up there on stage, but the time has changed, be aware of that. Parent-teacher conferences, again, went really well, the format we have, I think, works pretty well, we had about seventy-five percent attendance, which is a little bit down. We had about seventy-five percent attendance, which is a little bit down from what it was the last time, but not horribly down. We had a hundred and four out of a hundred and thirty-eight of our students were represented. Three of those families have a, have a larger number of kids that didn't show up, you know, three. So, actually, the percentage of families that were represented was over eighty percent, so if you want to look at it that way. And our student print enrollment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year's going pretty well. Most of our students have chosen classes for next year. If we add JAG, that won't really cause a problem for us, because we'll identify those students who meet the qualifications, and we'll pull them in, and we'll see if they're interested in changing their schedules individually. So it's not going to, not going to be a big issue for them. Question?
I got a question that needs to be addressed to you or both of you, but I've been asked a couple of times, is our weight room open to the public? Or is it, there's, I know there's been mention of kids using it after hours, that, you know, you went to school here or whatever, and I'm just been asked on.
No, it's not open.
Okay.
No.
So I just didn't know if that needed to be addressed, or?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Meyer.
We're up, due up for our K six math textbooks. We've been using a tool called GoMath for the last several years. We've been renewing it yearly here after our full subscription ran out. It's an okay tool, and we may be continuing to use it, but one we're looking hard at is the same one that we went to with our, our secondary math for our seventh and eighth, and algebra geometry and Algebra II. So, we're collecting samples on that. Ideally, if we can look at that and decide that's a good tool, we'll, we'll get that. So that'll be a fairly large expense coming up for that. Looking at some science and social studies, those are not major expenses there, but the math would be a big one there, so just heads up on that. PTO Carnival is April ninth. Elise, you want to add anything since you're involved in that?
I'm just hoping that it goes on instead of getting canceled again because of COVID. We have everything ready to go, because we were all ready to go until what? We canceled two days before?
Yeah, this spring.
I think we canceled.
Or this fall.
This fall. I think we canceled right before, it was like a week before Thanksgiving break, so, but we're all ready to go. We're kind of excited. It brings in a lot of people and good money, so PTO does a lot for the elementary.
Raising a lot of money. Teacher retention is one thing that came up on my recent Kansas-Missouri Superintendent's Leadership Forum. It was a big topic. We spent a lot of time on. And this year, Ford Haze State, in cooperation with KMEA, KSB, and our Administrators Association in the state, did a large study over educator, teacher engagement and retention. We're seeing a lot of teachers leave the profession, and there's a lot of anti-public education sentiment in our state house. Not everybody, not exclusively, but there's a lot of that push around the country, not just in Kansas. But I'll send you this, between those, this survey and the information that we discussed, one of the things that stood out to me is that, you know, we talk about a teacher shortage, and every president since Eisenhower has had a major speech, almost every president has had a major speech on teacher shortage, and what are we gonna do about it in our country? So it's not a new problem. COVID complicated that, I really do think. That was, I would not want to be a new teacher the year that COVID hit. I'm trying to wade through that mess. So, this survey, again, I'll send it to you with the Friday note, but is, COVID had an effect on some of that information. What stood out to me is, it talked about the leaky bucket, and there's, we're losing teachers because our bucket is leaking. And our solution has always been, well, how, how do we put more water in it? And the solution really needs to be, how do we plug those leaks? And one of the, the major things for teachers, one driving force is that teachers have input into what goes on in their school. They feel like their opinion is valued. They feel like their opinion is valued in the district. They feel like their opinion and their profession is valued in the state. And, and there's things we can do here, not just point out there that, well, why doesn't Ford Haze get more, more math teachers in? There is a big part of that. We do still need the water coming in the bucket. But there's things we can do here, and things I, I think our legislators could do that help support education. But anyway, I did just want to bring that up, and I'll send that to you in the Friday note. Our elementary parent-teacher conferences, we had ninety-two percent attendance. And one aspect of our conferences, we set a goal in the fall for every kid with families. And in the spring, we revisited that goal, and that was K-12, pre-K through 12. They, they looked at their goal, and they were all varying goals. Maybe it was behavior, maybe it was reading, maybe it was math. But they all had a goal, and seventy-eight percent said they'd met that goal. So, we're gonna continue that, maybe enhance that a little bit. SR funds, I don't have a good update for you on this. We need to get that plan put together, but still looking at Windows, HVAC for the primary things. We've already got some of that spent on our, on our interventionist that needs to go in the plan and then backfilled from that federal funds. But, so I've got to get that plan put together, that SR three plan. School lunch. Congress did not extend the free lunches for everybody. So, starting June thirtieth, we'll go back to the way we used to do it, where students have to qualify for free or reduced-price lunches. That will also affect summer lunch program. That's one of those things that if we don't have enough kids qualify, then only the ones that qualify would get a free lunch in the summer. It may make that not financially feasible to do. But we're gonna, I think, forge ahead this year, because it will be free through June thirtieth, which we may have to adjust, so. Just another heads up on that. One other thing to be aware of, I'm pretty certain we're going to have to republish our budget. And it all has to do with our preschool. We get funding for four-year-old at-risk students, so they qualify based on their low academic scores, or they're a single parent, or poverty, those things. But they didn't qualify three-year-olds. We got no funding for three-year-olds. Well, there was enough money in the state budget appropriated for preschool that they were able to fund the three-year-olds. So that basically doubled our, our funding from the state. Well, I did budget enough for that funding. We spend more than that, we just don't take all those expenses out of the preschool fund. So, we're gonna have to republish that budget, not a big deal, just fifty bucks for a legal fee for the paper to republish that. We'll have to do that, and I'll wait till June to do that, because when we know everything, and we've been, we haven't had to republish in a long time. Usually, when you have to republish, we've got more money than we planned on, so that's a good thing. Legislative update, there's a lot going on. A few things that are very concerning. There's a statewide implementation of a math program called Math Nation that would be required by the state that we participate in, and we pay for. But the state's really paying for it because they fund our schools, so it's. This is one of many things where we're being told what we have to do, and the seven people at this table don't have the say. So if we have to adopt this program, whether we think it's good or not, whether it has failed to work in many states, which it has failed to work, we would still have to adopt that. That's not finalized yet. It's part of the appropriations bill. So we'll see what happens with that. Increased funding, as planned, I believe is coming. So that means about an extra forty thousand for us, not, not a huge deal, but better than nothing. We have to publish a needs assessment on our website, which isn't, isn't generally bad. For our budget, there's some thought that boards don't, don't put enough effort into building the budget, and it had to be explained to some committee members that the boards do not build the budget. The staff builds the budget, and you all approve it, which is good to have some input. But another big one is this parent rights and transparency. I think we talked about it a little bit. Requiring teachers to post every lesson, every video, every worksheet online. A lot of this is unnecessary, because if you as a parent want to know what's being taught, I'll give you a book. Here's the book we're reading. What was that worksheet? I, as a parent, am watching my kid do the homework, and, oh, that, that seems controversial. Well, ask the teacher about it. So it's all open record. You can find that information out already. Another bill requires us to have open enrollment for non-resident students. So, if a student is outside of our district borders, we have no choice but to take them. There may be specific cases, like if a student is expelled for bringing a gun to school, we might be able to prevent that. But taking away your ability to decide who comes to our school and who does not, whether they live in our district or not. Also requiring school districts to accept private school and homeschool students part-time. So you homeschool your kids, we will be required to take your kid in our band class, in our art class, if, if we have room. Not that that's a bad thing to do, we would likely do that in some cases, but it comes down to who decides that. Do you all decide it, or do they decide that from the Pico? So. I won't go through the whole document with you. CAPERS, looking at making changes to CAPERS to where working, people working in retirement could come back sooner, help our teacher shortage. I don't know that that would be long-term, but. So they'll be wrapping up here soon. There'll be lots of movement. There was a lot of movement today. That's all I had for my report.
All right. Thank you. Executive session, personal.
Probably fifteen minutes, and then include Blaine.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at eight eighteen in this room.
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at eight eighteen in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carried.
And our motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss potential items for upcoming contract negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer to be included, and that we return to open session at eight twenty-nine in this room.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss potential items for upcoming contract negotiations pursuant to the exception for employee, the employer. Negotiations under KOMA with Mr. Meyer be included, and that we return to open session at eight twenty-nine in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carried. Call the meeting back to order. Resignations and contracts.
I have a resignation letter here from Ava Bunker as a preschool teacher after the conclusion of this year. I'd recommend approving that.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Ava Bunker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carried.
I also have a letter of resignation for Julie Fox as life program director, effective at the end of the school year.
So moved.
Second.
I got to get in there once.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Julie Fox as life after-schools director. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, motion carried.
We have handbook review and foundation update, capital improvements plan, and any projects that would go along with that. Look at supplemental contracts to include in May.
Have we got any thoughts on the concession stand football field or anything?
No, that's kind of part of the facility's woodman. There's gonna be a lot of money tied up in doing something there. Needs to be part of that process, but.
In what?
Concession stand.
Oh, yeah, bathroom, the concession stand.
Good question, though.
Move, adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side, adjourn.